That was kinda interesting. You know, it's usually, one of the things I do when I first get here is check out the P A system. What do you think? Is it a fixable thing, or a different microphone, or is that that guy up there? Now? Now's better. What, it just needed to get warmed up, kinda like us older folks here, just need to get warmed up? We're darn close to 7:00 P M., so I don't see a big line at the door. So in a minute or so, we'll get started. Some of us older folks need to get going to get started. I'm referring to myself as I get up from my airplane seat after sitting there. All right, good evening. Happy to have you here. I'm Rich Peabody. Many of you know me, or at least know my name. So, so thank you for being here. I'm happy to have everybody come on down and spend a little time on a Wednesday night in the mid, the end of August. It's good to have you all here. So we're here for our special town meeting, Town of Irving Special Town Meeting warrant. Wednesday, August 28th, 2024, 7:00 P M., Irving Elementary School, 28 Northfield Road, Irving, Mass. Commonwealth of Massachusetts Franklin S.S., Town of Irving Constables, Town Clerk, and Administrative Assistant. In the name of the Commonwealth, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the said inhabitants qualified to vote in town affairs to meet in the Irving Elementary School located at 28 Northfield Road, Irving, Mass. Zip code 01344, Wednesday, August 28th, 2024, at 7:00 P M. And then and there to vote on the following articles in the warrant. It's that publication that's been made available to you. They are Articles 1 through 12. In addition, you are hereby directed to serve the above warrant and to post attested copies as directed by vote of the town at least 14 days before said meeting. Fail not and make due return of this warrant with your doings thereon to the Town Clerk for the day of said meeting. It was given under our hands on the 12th day of August, 2024, signed by the Irving Select Board. And it was posted and certified Commonwealth of Massachusetts Franklin S.S., Town of Irving. I have served the above warrant by posting attested copies as directed by vote of the town at least 14 days before the time of holding said meeting, and it's signed by our Town Clerk, who is one of our constables. Town Clerk has informed me that we do have a quorum, and thank you for coming out to make that quorum possible. And thank you for being here. If we'd all take a moment to... Where'd that flag go? It's always here. You know that Administrative Assistant, Brian Smith, he'll do almost anything. I think he picked up some lady's trash once that got missed. All right, if you all please rise and join with me for the honor and privilege of pledging our allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice forever. Thank you, and indeed, the privilege of being able to say the Pledge of Allegiance. I see we have a proposed procedural motion right off the bat. Is this a, somebody here wants to propose the motion? Or should I just read it to the record? Okay, and I'm gonna propose this procedural motion, which appears right at the beginning before Article 1. I think this helps us with a few things. I'd like to make a motion. I move that the reading of all articles be waived, and that prior to the reading of a motion under the article, the moderator only briefly summarizes the content of the article to be considered. And further, that unless objection is raised, the reading of the detailed motions be waived, where the article as printed can, in the opinion of the moderator, be incorporated by reference in any motions presented. We have a motion to put this in front of us. This, we've been doing this for a bunch of years, and our lawyer has suggested to us that we make it formal, that I just refer to the article, say a couple of things about it, and we put it in front of ourselves for discussion. Does this work for you? Okay, it formalizes what we've been doing. So, all those in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. The proposed procedural motion has passed unanimously. Article 1 is an appropriation for fiscal year 2024 expenses, and you can see a bill from Cooley Dickinson, Eurofins, and Home Depot. It adds up to $473.14. It's submitted by the town administrator, and the Finance Committee recommends approval. Motion to approve as written, and a second. Discussion and/or question. No questions appearing. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. Article 1 has passed unanimously, which does satisfy the nine-tenths vote requirement. Article 2 is a re-adopt general bylaws in their entirety. So our Town Clerk and others have been working through our bylaws and cleaning up their order of events and wording without actually changing bylaws themselves. So they've been cleaning up the bylaws. It's submitted by the Select Board, and the Finance Committee recommends approval. We have a motion and a second. Do we have questions on this? No questions appearing. All those in favor of Article 2, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. Article 2 has passed unanimously. Article 3 is a senior citizen property tax work-off program. I've read it through a couple of times myself, but it seems to propose that certain persons of certain ages with a certain dollar amount, $2,000 yearly, could work off part of their tax bill through this program. It's submitted by the Select Board, and the Finance Committee recommends approval. Motion in a second, putting it in front of us. I'm sure there must be questions. Any questions? Curiosities? Need for functional description? No questions appearing. All those in favor of Article 3, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. Article 3 has passed unanimously. Okay, Articles 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, and 10, all relate to the same topic. And I believe we have... 4 does not. Ah, okay, we should handle 4 separately, then on the others, we'll have a quick discussion before we get into those. So Article 4 is the acceptance of the relocation of Care Drive, and it's all laid out here with boundaries, et cetera. And it's realigning the layout. It's submitted by the Select Board, and the Finance Committee recommends approval. Motion in a second, brings it in front of us. On this one, do we have questions? Y'all well informed. Very good. Article 4, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. Article 4 passes unanimously. All right, here's where we are with Article 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, and 10. And a quick pre-discussion before we look at the individual articles. Did I hear Brian was gonna tell us a few things about this, or were you uninformed on that? Oh, then, come on in.
Good evening. Many of you should be aware that we've been working on the Church Street Bridge project for a number of years. We're finally getting through the final stages. We're currently at what Mass DOT calls the 75% marker. Once we pass this, we start preparing the final construction and bid documents. To move forward, there are a few easements that need to be secured to allow the project to go forward, and that's what these next six articles do. The Select Board is seeking authorization from the voters to begin the official process. It takes about 45 days, so these are not happening tomorrow. If they gain the authorization from you tonight, we will be able to work with Mass DOT, get final approval. Then we can start reaching out to every one of the property owners listed in the warrant, notifying them of the request, notifying them of their rights, and start that interactive process with each of the property owners. In terms of the easements that are being sought, most of them are either temporary for the actual construction of the bridge, or they're permanent related to the overhead utilities. So these are actual poles that already exist, and guy wires that are already in place, or they're the air rights for the lines that go above the corner of a piece of property. So we've had a few site visits. I see many of the faces that joined us on those site visits and discussed some of those pieces. Nothing has significantly changed from there. There are two proposed amendments that the Select Board's going to make, but they have to do with part of Key at Brook. And there was an assumption that the town owned a piece of Key at Brook, and we do not. The property belongs to two private landowners. And so the square footage calculations have altered slightly to reflect that, that correct change. But I'm happy to answer any questions folks may have about the proposed easements. Okay, thank you.
And thank you. All right, Article 5 is property for Dana Seymour Jr. on Church Street. And the easement is described here in this language. It's submitted by the Select Board, and the Finance Committee recommends approval, as well as the Capital Planning Committee. Motion and a second. Are there questions on Article 5 and what it does for us? No questions appearing. All those in favor of Article 5, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. Article 5 passes unanimously, which satisfies the two-thirds majority vote. Article 6 is an authorization for easement with Odin Enterprises, Inc. named. And it's also on the Church Street Bridge project, submitted by the Select Board. Finance Committee recommends approval, as does the Capital Planning Committee. We have a motion and a second. Are there questions on Article 6? No questions appearing. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. Article 6 has passed unanimously, satisfying the two-thirds majority vote requirement. Article 7 is an authorization for easement acquisition. Property is owned by Peter G. Mallett and Betty Lou Mallett on Church Street. It's submitted by the Select Board. Finance Committee recommends approval, as well as the Capital Planning Committee. Okay, Article 7, questions, comments? None appearing. All those in favor of Article 7, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. Article 7 has passed unanimously, satisfying the two-thirds majority vote requirement. Article 8 is an authorization for easement acquisition related to property owned by Henry L. Balzarney. And it is again related to the bridge project. It's submitted by the Select Board. The Finance Committee recommends approval, as well as the Capital Planning Committee. We have a motion and a second, putting it in front of us for discussion. And I am aware right here of a proposed amendment which changes some of the language. Would you like to propose that for us?
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion that we amend Article 8, the authorized easement acquisition, to read as follows. "To see if the town will vote to authorize the Select Board to acquire by purchase, gift, eminent domain, or otherwise for general public way purposes, a temporary easement consisting of 397.00 square feet of land, more or less, for the purpose of temporary overhead utility relocation, and a temporary easement consisting of 32.00 square feet of land, more or less, for the purpose of riprap installation and de-watering measures slash coffer, uh, cofferdam, both on the easterly side of North Street and the westerly side of Highland Avenue, Town of Irving, Franklin County, Massachusetts, from owner now or formerly known as Henry L. Balzarini, for the Church Street Bridge replacement. Said land is more specifically shown as parcel TE-3 and TE-4 on a set of plans entitled Plan and Profile of Church Street, Bridge Number E-10-011, in the Town of Irving, Franklin County, prepared by Weston and Sampson Engineers, Inc., dated June 7, 2024, and as amended. Said plans are on file with the Town of Irving, Town Clerk, or take any other vote or votes in relation thereto."
Okay, the amendment is as read, and it is seconded. Therefore, it's in front of us for any discussion we have about amending Article 8. Are there questions on this amendment?
I was just gonna say, so in case you missed it when I was reading it, the change is increasing 17 square feet on the first temporary easement, and dropping down and minimizing the other one down to 32 square feet, and then changing the purpose a little bit. It's for the riprap installation. That was the totality. I just thought it was cleaner to read the whole article.
Thank you. So is there further question on amending this article? All those in favor of amending Article 8, as has been read into the record, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. Article 8 is amended unanimously. Now, Article 8, in its amended form, needs to be voted on. Are there any questions on the amended Article 8? I know this sounds redundant, but it is parliamentary procedure. Motion and a second? Great. So the amended Article 8 is in front of us for final consideration. All those in favor of the amended Article 8, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. Article 8 is amended. The amended Article 8 is, is accepted. It's passed unanimously, satisfying the two-thirds vote requirement. Article 9 is an authorization for easement acquisition. And the names John Rathburn and Lauren Rathburn appear here for this Church Street project. It's submitted by the Select Board. Finance Committee and Capital Planning Committee recommend approval. We have a motion and a second, putting it in front of us. I understand it falls into the same couple of revisions.
It does fall into the same. Given that we just went through it, if people can follow along, I'm just gonna make the amendment and put the actual terminology changing in it. So I make a motion to amend Article 9 with the following amendments. The first square foot of land, where it references 158.00, will change to 139.00. And in the last line, or in that same sentence where it ends with measures slash cofferdam, insert a semicolon in the words "and a temporary easement, comma, consisting of 183.00 square feet of land, comma, more or less, comma, for the purpose of riprap installation and de-watering measures, cofferdam, comma, both." That's the first part of the amendment. It continues on as normal until you get down to the specific parcels shown on the set of plans, and it is going to be amended to read parcels P U E-4, comma, T E-5, comma, and T E-6.
Okay, did everybody follow along? We have a motion made and a second, amending that article to read as was just described. Are there questions on this amendment? No questions on amending the article. All in favor of amending Article 9, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. The amendment has passed unanimously. Article 9's last consideration, now in its amended form, is in front of us. Motion and a second, brings it up, as discussed, as amended, as voted on. Any further question? No questions appearing. All those in favor of the amended Article 9, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. Article 9 as amended, has passed unanimously, satisfying its two-thirds majority vote. Article 10 lists out the beautiful names of Katrina M. Bascom and Brian C. Reshot. It's the Church Street Bridge project again, submitted by the Select Board. Finance Committee and Capital Committee are recommending approval. We have a motion and a second, putting it in front of us.
It is the last one with a amendment. I make a motion to amend Article 10 in the description under the names of Katrina M. Bascom and Brian C. Reshot, continuing on where it says parcels P U E-5 and T E-7 instead of 6. That is the only amendment.
Do you have a second on your proposed amendment? Motion and a second, to revise Article 10 as has been presented. Are there questions on revising Article 10 as this amendment proposes? No questions on amending Article 10, so all in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. Article 10 is duly amended. The amended Article 10 now, last call for questions. No questions appearing. Motion and a second, puts it here for last call. Nobody's got anything to say, it's okay. The amended Article 10, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. Article 10, in its amended form, has passed unanimously, satisfying its two-thirds majority vote. Article 11. Article 11 might cause a little bit of conversation, just a little, because there's some questions and curiosity, and at least a report on what's going on there. Article 11 is appropriate for the fiscal year 2025 capital improvements, $12,000 for town meeting voting equipment. It's submitted by the Select Board. Finance Committee recommends approval, as well as Capital Planning Committee. Motion and a second. Mr. Town Clerk, do you have a few things to say about what's up with voting equipment?
Hi. So, there was a lot of discussion after the last annual town meeting about secret ballots. And I've been thinking about this for a couple of years, you know, when I go to the Town Clerk Conference and I see these electronic devices. And so I investigated it a little bit sooner than I had anticipated, hoping to, you know, make things better for everyone, you know, when we come to town meeting and vote on articles. And so this system is a system where basically you have a device. Obviously, it's an electronic device, but I suggest that it's like a TV remote, if you will. You know, it's electronic, and there's, I think there's five buttons on it. The last two, we wouldn't use for any of our meetings, but there's yes, no, and abstain. And it's connected up via radio, and of course, it's encrypted. And when it comes time for a vote, we will announce that voting is now open, and we'll open it up and allow people to vote, and give X amount of time to vote, you know, 15 seconds, 30 seconds, whatever it is, and then we'll announce... thirty seconds, whatever it is, and then we'll announce voting is closed and we'll close the voting down. And then we will know instantaneously, you know, what the vote is, whether the article passed or not. It'll automatically calculate anything, you know, if it has to be a, you know, simple majority, or if it has to be two-thirds, or nine-tenths, or whatever it might need to be. Um, I think, uh, that's probably the highlights. The nice thing about it is that when we open it up to vote, if you make a mistake and you print yes and you meant to do no, you know, you can, you can still click no. While the voting period window is open of that fifteen seconds or thirty seconds, whatever, you know, is, it will be, you can click whatever you want, but it's the last click that you do that will count. And there is, as I understand it, there's a confirmation on, uh, the device that says this is what it is. And if you look at it and say, no, that's not what I want, then you, you change it. And you can do that throughout the duration of when the window for voting is open. So you're not locked in if you quickly grab it out of your pocket and, oh, I clicked the wrong button, you know, now you, you can correct it, you know? So I think that's most of the highlights, uh, if, you know, questions, if people have questions, I'm happy to talk about it. Do you wanna go through the moderator or through me? Which way do you wanna do it?
Yeah, you've got this, 'cause you've done this enough times, but sure.
Yeah, Bill was first, yeah.
When we do have questions, please come to the microphone, so it's, you're recorded for posterity, and I'm saying your name, but we all know who you are, Bill.
(laughing).
Bill Beddering. Did you, was that all of them?
Yeah, I think they're working it over there. There we go.
You know? Yeah, okay. Um, my only question is, is the device required to be certified or any certification with it on a yearly basis or, or what happened?
So the device is certified, uh, by the town, uh, by the Secretary of State's office, and several towns already use them in Massachusetts. Just as an aside, it turns out that the US Congress also uses them.
So, I, I assume there's no further yearly certification like what they would have?
No.
Or you would have, um, you would just test it before?
Correct.
Before you see?
Correct. Yep.
Terry Dodge? Do you have, oh, sorry. I have two questions.
Yep.
Do you have a company in mind, and, um, are you expecting to have the information shown up on the screen, so the question would be up there and then the voter response would be up there as well?
Yes, so I do have a, a company in mind because there's really only two companies that I'm aware of that do it. And, um, so I'm, I'm looking at the, uh, the, the company that is most prevalent in Massachusetts with other towns. In fact, the town of Orange has the same system. So if by chance I, you know, uh, needed extra clickers because something happened or whatever, I can talk to Nancy, and I've already talked with her, and she said, oh, sure, we'd be happy to share these units back and forth. So there's a built-in backup system. So I felt pretty safe about that. Um, what was the other question? I forgot, I could already.
Are you able to see it up there?
Yes, uh, it is our plan to, to, to show the name of the article, not the entire article, because it'll be such fine print from back there, you won't be able to read it anyway. So it'll be just kind of the name of the article. We have, you know, the paperwork so that you will always know what the article actually says. And, um, as people are voting, um, you know, I don't think we're showing anything until voting closes and then it'll immediately show the vote. You know, because we don't want people to be, oh, I wonder what my neighbor's doing or whatever, and, you know, where's the trend going? So, y- you know, it would be our preference to say, once voting is closed, yes, the results will be on the screen.
And this is for all the articles? Just it's all?
Yes, uh, my thinking on that is to use it for every article. I know that technically it goes faster as it has tonight, uh, you know, yay, and oh, there's no nays, oh gee, that goes really quick. Um, but I want people to get used to them and to continually be refreshed every time we have a meeting, so that when there's something that may be really controversial, we already know and feel comfortable with them. So that's my thinking. I mean, I'm open to other discussions if people have other thoughts, but, uh, that's kind of what I was thinking about.
And there isn't any other subscriptions with it, the twelve thousand dollars or whatever?
Well, there's a maintenance fee as with any, any stuff that you get, yeah, you know.
And there's training involved?
Oh, yes, yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you. Other questions? Yeah, come on up.
How many of the specific devices are you gonna get?
So the, the initial, uh, what did I put in here, two-hundred-and-fifty? Two-hundred? Two-hundred, okay, two-hundred. Uh, so what I did was I went through the last twenty years of town meetings to see how many people we've ever had at a town meeting.[961.13][961.13](laughing) Uh, I feel relatively safe at two-hundred. I, I think three times I came across where we had more than two-hundred, uh, they were very, you know, it's like when we dissolved the Fire and Water District, there was a meeting that had like two-hundred-and-fifteen or something. But because of that, um, I, uh, knowing that Nancy has devices that I could borrow, if I'm expecting to exceed that amount, I would certainly have them available that night. And I also intend frankly to buy a few more devices, just kind of out of my standard budget, down the road so that I feel comfortable. I'd like to get up to three-hundred. We, we have never gone over like two-twenty-five at a, at a meeting, but.
What happens if you have to bargain?
You know, i- if, if that happens and I don't have the devices, the, we have a couple of options. One of the options would be to table the article and bring it back at another time when I can get more devices here. I can always rent them from the vendor, worst-case scenario. Um, you know, we, we could, uh, conceivably table it and say, well, you know what, we don't wanna buy extra devices or whatever, 'cause we already got three-hundred of them and this is probably a one and off, and so then we could plan on doing a secret ballot. So, uh, for that article, yeah, so, that, you know, we can, you know, certainly have a backup of doing it that way, yep. Good questions, excellent, thank you. Other questions? Yes.
If you just wanna add about, um, the vendor coming out for the first one?
Oh, yes, sure. Um, so the very first time, uh, this vendor will come out and, um, they will actually run the equipment. I mean, I'm, I'm gonna learn about it beforehand and we gotta preload it with all the articles and stuff like that, but they're gonna come out and they'll, um, have a, like a mini lesson for the people, uh, for the voters to be able to play with it a couple of times before we actually get into the real voting. So you'll feel hopefully comfortable on that basis as well. Yeah, they were gonna come out for that, yep. Thank you. Other questions? Thank you.
All right, so moving into the future is what we're doing, if we're so inclined. Are there further questions then on Article eleven? No questions appearing. All those in favor of Article eleven, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Article eleven is passed unanimously. Yeah, and it says two-thirds its majority vote, 'cause it's capital, capital money. That's right, yeah, okay. Article twelve is a citizen's petition. Uh, when a mention, motion is made at a town meeting, request a secret ballot for an article relating to a two-thirds vote to pass, the motion must be acted on by the town moderator. It's submitted by Dana Dodge, it was a citizen's petition, and it has been forwarded as correct for town procedures to this meeting for a vote here tonight. Do I have a motion to accept the article?
Motion to accept Article twelve on that.
Motion and a second. Hundred-and-twenty-seven people. Thank you. Thank you for caring enough about your town to sign something like that and make this humble request right here. So thank you for participating in the process. I reviewed, uh, since I heard about this, I reviewed that night, and, um, we had already called for the vote. We'd already called for a standing count because the town clerk reminded me that it needed a counted vote. So I'd already declared the vote in the majority. Town clerk said we need to count it, I'd already called for a standing count, people were on their feet when somebody shouted out that they wanted to go to a paper ballot. So it wasn't a formal motion, it wasn't formally seconded, and I ignored it because we were already voting. If it had gone a little differently, Mr. Moderator, I'd like to call for a paper ballot, somebody seconds it, you would've gone straight to a paper ballot. It just didn't go down that way. So I've been equally complimented, as well as told they don't like it. Almost two to one, two, two to one people like the paper ballot when they feel something is sensitive, and they compliment me for going to it. And for every two of those, I get, I get one that says, stop wasting our time, have people stand and be counted and vote. So it cuts both ways, but if we codify this tonight, we're good, we're all on the same page anyways. So questions, concerns, comments? Again, my thanks for hundred-and-twenty-seven of you putting it on the line.
Was it already moved, Mr. Moderator?
Yeah, it was. Were you getting ready to add comment?
(inaudible).
Oh, yes, so let's call for the vote.
Well, we, it had already been moved and seconded, I believe, and you asked for questions when, when, so you've already discussed parliamentary process tonight, so my question for clarity moving forward that, um, in this article, what constitutes a formal motion? And I believe you've somewhat addressed that, but I would like additional clarity to, so that our townspeople can understand what is, in fact, required. Is it enough to stand up? In that meeting, you had called for people, if they wanted to be recognized, to raise their hand and come to the microphone. I just want everybody for clarity to understand the process. So my question is, what does constitute an official motion?
We could get in a quagmire here. We could. But in this, yeah, in this for instance, you raise your hand to get my attention. Mr. Moderator, I recognize you, you called for the secret ballot or whatever paper ballot, and somebody seconds it. At that point, I've recognized it and I can't deny it. Yes?
So it's more of a comment, um, since we just passed Article eleven, which by virtue makes every vote a secret ballot, um, if somebody were to request a secret ballot, would we have to, uh, suspend using the clickers, get the voting machine out, get the paper out, and have it done by paper ballot? My, the, the purpose of Article eleven was to ensure that all votes are cast in secret ballot, but virtually. So I'm wondering if the purpose and, and the, the thought behind what the article is for Article twelve was satisfied by Article eleven. It's more of a question, um, you know, I'm not sure if.
I, I believe that common sense tells us it is. So almost the very need to call for a secret ballot goes away if we're already voting in secret anyways. Yes?
Not if they're not working that night. So then you have to have a backup reality.
Exactly. Even if it's taking scrap paper and tearing it up and have people line up with a pencil and stuff, they're, they're voting to a shoebox, there's a way to get a vote done if we had to get it done.
So the interesting thing about this article to me is it's not written in the format of a bylaw. You know, uh, it also references MGL that are currently in place, so we're theoretically governed by that anyway. I, I'm not sure there's a need for this to be passed, because we already know that if somebody requests a ballot, you know, the moderator is supposed to act upon it if they're making the appropriate motion. I, I'm, I'm just not sure that this is a necessary thing to pass, you know? Just my two cents. Thank you.
Yeah, Bill, come on down.
So, um, the way I look at this article, um, before just passed the, uh, capital improvement for the devices that we will use, I haven't heard anyone say that that's a, a rule or regulation of the town to use these devices. And when I look at Article twelve, the citizen's petition, it's a, it's a bylaw that works well with Article eleven and adds the procedure, and they link together.
Yes, sir.
On what Scott was saying, some clarity, i- if there is some, on whether a, these electronic voting devices would qualify as secret ballot by definition? So that I think to what someone else alluded to, we wouldn't have to put them away and pull out paper if that definition is very specific to paper ballots? Or does that allow us to use what we've just invested in to, to meet that requirement?
Personally, I would say they're looking for a secret ballot. You hold your remote so your neighbor can't see it, and you press your remote. Meanwhile, the music is playing, doo, 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 and I give you a countdown to when the vote is closed. Little TV screen shows the vote. That satisfies in my mind, mind, everything for a secret ballot. So with Article eleven passed, we don't even really need Article twelve, but I hear Does that answer your question? Well enough?
I don't know if that's a defined thing and if this meets it, that's my question. Is that a defined term in law? And if it does, does this meet the requirement?
That's where we need the town's lawyer. So is there a question where we need legal advice? Citizen's petition trying to turn itself into town bylaw, sort of, not directly a bylaw, but, and it's unclear? Did we get?
I don't think it's unclear.
Well, that's, um, I was just following your lead. I think it's clear.
I don't think it's a bylaw. I don't think it's written correctly to be a bylaw.
Right, it's not a bylaw.
And I, yeah, every, well.
Come on, yeah.
Every bylaw that we pass, be it a regular bylaw or zoning bylaw, I have to send it to the Attorney General's office for review and approval. And my gut tells me they would not approve this as a town bylaw because you don't add anything that the state already requires an MGL. I, I could be wrong, I'm not a lawyer, you know, it's just kind of a gut feeling that I have, but everything that's quoted in there, those chapters and verses are there in state law already. So I, 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 I'm not sure that it does anything really, um, and I don't know that it'll pass AG muster.
Yeah, Bill's hand was up first, but we got some new contributors too, so keep those
Um, I, I did a little checking myself when this, when this, um, petition came forward, and I looked at several communities in western Massachusetts, Franklin County, I looked at, um, uh, southeastern Massachusetts, and this article was adopted by, I'd say, almost ninety percent of the communities. This is not anything that's unusual, um, it's clearly out there, it's clearly been adopted by other communities. So I, I still think it's, it's linked to, to, to the, uh, the article we got in. So, I still think it's linked to, to the article we got in...
Article 12, Article 11. In either case, I think it's procedural enough that if there's any question, there's a policy and a way to follow this article and to address the devices as, as the situation occurs on the floor. And you had your hand up right there, come on up to the microphone. How are you?
I'm great, how are you?
I'm okay.
Thanks. Megan Edson. So, I had actual, I don't know, questions or comments, a few of them. So, with the clicker, it's considered secret by common sense, but is there a way, like when you do a secret ballot and you have the pieces of paper, are you able to say, "Clicker number 123 voted yes, clicker 1234 voted no," so that you can show that list just as you would if they were paper ballots handed in? So, say you didn't like the vote and you wanted to see the results, are you able to see the individual votes like you do with paper? Edson, I am going to...
There's a way that it can be done, but I don't think it's direct in the system if I remember correctly. It would have to be something where we recorded at the check-in table, we'd have to write down the number of the device and who we gave it to.
Well, then it's no longer secret.
But it is if we don't write it down, you know, I have no intentions of writing anything down on that, and so they'll be just randomly given out, you know, in whatever order, and I'm not going to maintain, you know, looking at the numbers and who's got what number, you know. But it is my understanding that, you know, technically, you know, you can do it by, you know, recording the number, but why would we do that? It's the very thing we're trying to avoid, you know?
Well, I think for, for the whole purpose of checks and balances, if someone questions that vote, that you then need to have some sort of way to validate that vote. You can't say 15 people voted one way and 20 people voted the other way if you can't prove that by showing the individual 15 and 20s.
Well, I'm not sure I agree with that. You know, if, if they're voting, right, and they voted and the results are tallied, that, that's the vote, that's no different than, you know, people, when we do a voice vote, you know, A and A, we don't know who's doing what. And even when we do a standing count, oh, you know, we go through and we just, you know, I don't even know who the person is, I'm just looking at your standing and we're doing the count.
And we have that opportunity to do that as citizens standing here, we can turn around and count 20 people and 15 people. And so, what I'm saying is, there needs to be a way to validate each individual vote and not just say, "Yes, the majority voted for it," and no, or "No, the majority voted for it." I think that holds back to everything about voting is that we need to be able to say, "15 did this, 20 did this." We don't need to know who it is.
That's, that's correct, but that's exactly, you know, how the clickers will work when, when you click it, all you get on the screen is numbers.
But we're just taking your word for it at that point.
I'm sorry?
We're just taking your word for it at that point. We can't turn around and say, "1, 2, 3, 4, 5." If I did this and you just said five people did it, I have the opportunity to turn around and see if five people did it. If you tell me five people did it, but you can't validate that, I have to take your word for it.
So, what do you, I guess I'm, I, you know...
And if you're doing it on paper?
If you're, if you're doing it on paper, you, you, you can count the number of people going through, sure.
If you do it on paper, then you can validate that by saying there are physically 15 of them. So, so, just keep that in mind, I don't need to argue about whether it's right or wrong, I'm just saying, bringing the point up. So, that goes back to the secret ballot part of it, where when somebody asks for a secret ballot and they want to see the results, it's now secret, but what if they, it's a big controversy or else it wouldn't be a secret ballot, so maybe we need to just look at that in that secret ballot thing. I had another question, but I may not be remembered at this point, so thank you for talking with me.
Yeah, yeah, well, please, and, and, you know, if you think of it, you know, let us know.
Do you still have confirmation?
Yeah, was there, there was another hand down back, yes.
Do you have a time to decide whether or not you're going to change?
Well, we always love hearing from you.
I don't think that this was intended to, to be a bylaw or anything, I think it was just intended for the moderator to follow what Mass General Law has already said. So, given the fact that we're going to get the clickers, I don't think that anybody's going to be making a motion in the first place for a secret ballot because we're already going to have the clickers. And turning around and looking at people is the same as we're clicking it and it's going up on the screen, so it's the same thing, we're just not going to see who it is that's voting, which is what we don't want. We don't want people to see who's, excuse me, voting. So, I don't see why, I agree with Bill, I don't see why we couldn't just vote for both of them and just solidify it together, but then on the other hand too, I don't think it matters if we don't vote on it, so. But I mean, it's not, it, I think it's, it's being made to be a bigger thing than what it actually is, it's just, if somebody asks for a secret ballot, can we please have it, period? That's all it is.
Right, and most of the time when it's asked for, it's been given.
And I think so, and on that point, I think because people probably didn't know how to present it, I don't, I don't know why, if people, and I, I understand now after listening to you why it wasn't, you know, the request wasn't put into effect.
We timed out.
Now, that's a secret ballot.
Secret speaking.
But I, I'm just saying, I think that if, if people knew, if people knew how to make the motion or whatever, then they probably would have done it appropriately at that time, but they didn't. It is what it is.
Yeah, yeah, I, and I, I understand, this is, you know, hey, Rich, you should have. I looked at the tape and I, I don't feel bad about how it went down that night because we'd already called for the vote, declared the vote, found out we had to count the vote, called for the standing count when somebody shouted that out after people were already standing. So, I just poo-pooed it and went about my business because we didn't have a formal paper ballot request before we started voting. You know that time when I say any more questions? That's a perfect time to oppose that amendment. All right, is there further comments?
So, just a couple things, I did find a section of the US Code that does define secret ballot as a ballot machine, paper, or otherwise, so I guess I answered my own question, seems to, this would be sufficient by definition under secret ballot. I did want to, two comments made about the clickers and verification versus having a stack of paper at least and registered voters that were handed them. The clickers would be given out, there's a process for that to registered voters, similar as a paper ballot would have, and there is some functionality where we could record the ID of the, the clicker, not tying that to a voter, but just to have, you know, clicker 1237920 were used, those were issued at the door, so kind of to do some sort of tie-out and tally that those were valid clickers that had been issued to valid voters, not tying a voter to a clicker. But we can do some different things like that and we can definitely ask the vendor for ways that they would provide a, you know, electronic record that matches what we would have with a paper record, just from a, from a, you know, substantiating that, we can look into it, I'm sure there are options that they offer. The, one other thing, or two other things, I think once we've used these ones, you know, it would be my interest in bringing to the board and bringing to the town, you know, whether it was a bylaw or something of that sort that says that we use those in all meetings and potentially has a contingency for what do we do if they're not working or can't be used, that we do a paper one and we use it for all. Because if that's our goal, and I think that's what I'm hearing tonight, that's the interest of the people and the interest of us here, then we should codify that as that's what we do and that's how we do it and here's how we ensure it's always done that way. And so, we can look at doing that once we've had these and we've proven them and kind of through that process. So, I, I would be interested in bringing that forward to, to a future meeting after we have acquired them and used them. And my last statement is just, this says two-thirds, I would, I guess I would make a motion if we're going to vote on this, that it changes from relating to a two-thirds vote to pass, that it says relating to anything that is not a simple majority, so that we cover nine tenths and we cover all the others, so anything that isn't a simple majority would fall under that.
I don't know that you can change a citizen's petition's...
I don't know if I can either. I don't know if I can either, but, did you bring up the point, if not the amendment, that's fine.
Now, if one of the citizens who brought the petition forward wanted to change it...
I think so. I think it's sort of wasted, I think we could be a whole hour and a half if it was a...
If I'd known this meeting was going to go so fast, I wouldn't have had that large pot of coffee. All right, let's, I'd like to make a motion that we amend this petition to what he said.
Do you second it? We have a motion and a second to amend the article, removing the words "two-thirds vote to..."
All votes that require something other than a simple majority.
All votes that require something other than a simple majority. Whoop, we got an amendment in front of us that's just been defined, and hands that want to talk about that.
I don't think it's worth, um, for the Lord, uh, it's my experience that you're not able to amend a citizen's petition. If the citizen signed this word and not the other word, it's my experience. I don't think you're a duty to him.
So, do you withdraw your second?
I'll withdraw a second.
Do you withdraw your motion?
Well, Mike, you know, I'm going to be dead by the phone. My question, the general, the whole deal was because of that night, the two-thirds vote, and the safe question, nobody made it on motion. I've also been to town meetings where, like you had, it formed a motion, and it didn't happen that night. And I believe that he asked that paper vote before he had the standard vote. Obviously, he did because that's what he did, he did his standard vote instead of paper vote because he didn't have time. All I'm saying in this petition, what these people signed, the way I explained it before, is I'd like to see the moderator, uh, two-thirds vote, we can vote all they want and all the votes if you want, but the one who wanted to take care of the two-thirds vote is a lot better that night when we're leaving, you know, how that went down. But after the two-thirds, you're going to have the buttons anyway, so there's nothing going to happen, I understand that, but I don't want you to throw this away, I didn't do it when we said you wanted to get any of these.
Do we know about when we're going to get the voting machines?
I'm hoping to have them here for the next annual town meeting. Now, I don't know if there'll be a special town meeting between now and then or not, sometimes there is, sometimes there isn't, I, that's the select board's, you know, jurisdiction, but I don't think I could get them in before, much before the next annual town meeting.
All right, so the motions have been withdrawn and we're back to the original citizen's petition article, and we seem to all know where we're at. Yes, sir?
Dan Hammack. I came over here because this is not an official finance committee comment, it's just me. You have 127 people who signed this thing. We've heard that from Bill, I trust that Bill, Benbury said, other towns have adopted similar things to this. Perhaps the Attorney General may have a problem with it, if they do, they'll just say so, it makes no difference. But if we don't vote on this, you have 127 people, they're not all here, and they'll have the impression, why bother signing things, why bother trying to participate, they just fluff over it and find some reason to not do it. My feeling is it won't hurt to do this and I recommend that we do it, not as a finance committee, just me, so it restores confidence of people who signed that paper that we're listening to them. It won't hurt anything in any way that I've heard, so, thank you.
And, and I agree, let's codify this, let's, I'm really kind of done talking about it. Would you like to vote on this thing?
Aye.
Oh, good. Article 12, all those in favor of Article 12, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Article 12 is passed unanimously, and like I said at the onset of this, thank you for going out and having enough thought about your town to get something like that done and 127 people to sign it and care about it. Is there any further business coming before this August gathering of folks? I would take a motion to, what's the proper motion, the one that, yeah...
Make a motion to dissolve.
Sign it back in.
A motion to adjourn, that's the one I want.
Second.
Motion to adjourn and a second, yes. All those in favor of adjourning tonight's meeting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, we're adjourned.